If I could have your attention, we are now reconvening the monthly hearing for Council Resolution eighteen dash zero zero nine, uh, nine one R, Budget Oversight Hearings for Baltimore City Police Department. So, thank you Chief of Staff Eric Malanson.
Yes, sir.
I tried my best to roll my R.
Thank you.
Um, if you would, if you could take us through the presentation that you prepared, and then we'll reserve questions until after that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. So, uh, the slide deck we saw earlier were on the crime statistics, so now we're moving into staffing, recruitment, and administrative issues in the department. Uh, the beginning of, uh, the year in, uh, or at the end of last year, we had about twenty-two seven sworn officers, one hundred ninety-five trainees. Uh, we have lost some sworn, and we are picking up more trainees. Uh, this is something we're tracking on a monthly basis to make sure that we are consistently trying to bring in sworn officers into the department. Overall, we do have our recorded vacancies against budget, that's something we're continuously looking at as well. We also look at our civilian corps. Uh, now, this does not include the sixty-two positions that were recently authorized for us, this is back in February, but we are actively, uh, working to now fill those sixty-two positions, which are part of our overall civilianization effort. Um, as was alluded to by the Commissioner's comments earlier, uh, we are undergoing a comprehensive staff review of all positions within the department, whether it be sworn or civilian, to look at job functions, job duties, to determine how best to deploy our resources, to make sure we can get the maximum use of our sworn resources, and to find opportunities for civilianization wherever possible. Uh, this is a breakdown of our, uh, duty patrol strength, this is for the number of officers, does not include any supervisor, uh, personnel, but these are the, when we talk about patrols for calls for service on the street, that's what we're looking at with the Sector Patrol numbers that are in black here. Uh, the, uh, staff augmentation that are going into the yellow numbers are, uh, other sworn resources that are not related to, uh, Sector Patrol, uh, not related to calls for service, but do support, uh, Sector Patrol, such as the DAT teams, such as the NCOs, uh, and other programs that are designed to help support the district functions. We are, again, taking a look at all of these, and as we graduate, folks, out of our Field Training Officer Corps, we are looking at growing our patrol resources consistently, but again, as was mentioned by the Commissioner, doing it, uh, in an equitable fashion across districts. Um, this is a snapshot of our current, uh, Education and Training Section Personnel. Uh, this has our, our trade class sizes. Our goal is to put fifty people in a class and to have six classes a year. Last class that we started on April fourth, we were able to hit forty-nine, which is very close to that goal. Uh, we were not able to hit that goal in the January class, and that's something we're trying to catch up on now. But as we all know, recruitment is a national challenge, and so we are working with our Baltimore's, uh, Innovation Team within the Mayor's Office. Uh, the support from Dan Heimowitz's team has been phenomenal. Uh, for the year, we're looking at a plus, a net eight, so when we look at recruitment, we have to look at attrition too, because they have to exist together and not one in a silo from the other. Uh, we did have forty-three new, forty-three new officer hires in February and March, um, but we also are looking at process. Uh, Recruit Stat is a big part of that process. This is something we've stolen from New Orleans, uh, at the Directive of the Commissioner, to make sure that we bring this good practice here. Recruit Stat is designed to look at every stage of the management process, from start to finish, to make sure that we are finding as many efficiencies as possible, and to make sure that we're getting quality candidates in the least amount of time possible. We are in a national environment for, uh, competition for qualified personnel who want to come to the Police Department, and, you know, one of the things that Recruit Stat was able to do was identify, uh, some of the command and control issues that were involved in how the observa, how the current team was built, or the previous team was built. Uh, once Recruit Stat was in place and we're able to see some of those command and control issues in that unit, we were able to restructure it, refocus it, put the right people in place, and be able to put the right kind of resources to help these processes improve to be successful. Um, so, right away, just from Recruit Stat being there, we've already seen an improvement. Um, in the prior month, we, we alluded to us moving additional resources in to the Background Investigation Unit, and more investigators. The result of that has been a significant decrease in the backlog of background investigations for completion. So, all of those things are something we're consistently looking at, we're finding new technologies, new ways for us to outreach. We plan on moving forward on a recruitment marketing strategy that we're very excited about, to help increase the throughput of online applications, and to direct them towards our new national testing environment, which again is designed to leverage everywhere in the country, that there are these national testing centers that we can direct people towards who are interested in passing the exam, and then identifying those as, uh, A-level recruits for us to, uh, target. One of the things we are, though, concerned about, not just the national environment, is the local environment. This is a, a program that we piloted with the Innovation Team for the last, uh, month and a half or so, uh, where we introduce a ride-along, uh, that is offered to those who live in the city, who are interested in potentially joining the department. What we found was seventy percent of folks, when they were surveyed after these ride-alongs, said they were more interested in maybe joining the BPD. Uh, and more than ninety-eight percent of them said they had come away with a positive interaction from a friendly and helpful knowledgeable officer. So that is showing, we're putting our best foot forward with this program, and it could allow us to create a new local pipeline of applicants, which I know is a priority of the Commissioner, um, in his, uh, overall plan. So when we look at that breakdown, we do see a lot of national applicants, and that's because of that national testing environment that we were able to deploy recently. But when we look at the local folks who are applying, we need to find ways to be able to target those, bring them into the process, and that's why the ride-along program, if we're able to launch it in a more concerted effort through our recruitment practices, could be a good boon to us. Of course, this is in combination with a number of other efforts, including our Cadet Program, our Explorers Program, and a lot of other youth involvement that we're trying to make sure that we're shepherding folks who are coming out of high school, interested in this as a potential job opportunity, that we're able to kind of put them in a Cadet Program, keep them out of trouble, so that they're able to bring us to a twenty, twenty-one year old who can then pass our background and get into our academy. So, that is a very hot priority for us. Uh, this is one of the slides that was shown last month as well. We, in an effort to show more transparency for our department, we want to make sure folks know where we are on our Public Integrity Bureau. This is the reorganization that was alluded to by the Commissioner. Our Office of, uh, or OPR, Office of Professional Responsibility, is now the Public Integrity Bureau. Uh, that is something where they are looking at disciplinary cases, and this provides that snapshot through, uh, through this year until April twenty-sixth. And then finally, the last piece I'll speak to is our overtime usage, which we are continuously tracking. Um, we are looking at payroll, which is about two million per payroll, but one of the things we are implementing, uh, we met with BBMR on this, it was very important for us to make sure we're getting a good handle on these overtime expenditures. Uh, we need better systems of accountability in place, the Commissioner has directed us to create those, use the mechanisms we have to make sure that we're able to identify better systems of accountability. We're looking at, uh, pre-authorization, pre-notification, and denial if it's not required, and making sure that these are mission-specific, you know, either for staffing shortages that are actual staffing shortages, or crime suppression plans that are directed at the command staff level. Um, so these new prior approval, new pre-authorization procedures, uh, some of which has been into put into place already, but for us, we need to be able to get good data. And so that is the mechanism we're working with. BBMR has been very helpful with us on that. Um, and so, as I mentioned before, this piece is also closely related to a full staffing review that we need to have in our department, that we're actually mandated by our consent decree to conduct. And the reason for that is because a staffing review can identify additional resources that could be redirected to patrol, that could offset any use of overtime, which is primarily used for patrol purposes. So, that's the overall, uh, review here, I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh, again, this is condensed from the previous month, but any information that, uh, you would like to have provided, uh, the Commissioner had alluded to, I, I am in charge of making sure that the Council has any data requests that are needed, and my hope is to move in towards a more uniform, in a reporting fashion, so that you're able to get the answers you need, and to be able to get it in a frequent basis, um, ideally monthly if not sooner. So, I'm happy to take any questions from members of the committee.
Thank you, appreciate it. Um, if we, I just wanna, if we can look at the, um, the graph that shows the fully duty patrol strength?
Yeah.
I just wanna get a better understanding.
Sure.
So, is this graph, does this reflect the total number of officers that are in patrol?
No. So, this reflects only the folks who are on the Sector, Non-Sector Patrol at full duty. So there are folks who are assigned to patrol, but might be on medical duty, or they're detailed to some other division. And so one of the things we are keeping track of here are the ones that are permanently detailed, but for patrol, uh, resources. So there are so folks who are assigned to the districts, but not to patrol functions. That's why the staffing review we're looking at is important, to maximize these numbers. But overall, what we're looking at this particular slide is only the folks who are full duty and in those Sector Patrol and Non-Sector Patrol by district. So it's actually from the previous reports you've seen, I've actually only pulled out that one line here, because it is something we absolutely need to focus on maximizing, and when we look at field training officers coming off of their rotations to be available for full duty, this is where we want to put them at their first stop after full, after field training.
So, so, um, so, there are officers that are assigned to patrol that don't patrol?
There are officers that are assigned to the district that don't perform patrol functions, such as detectives, such as some of the administrative functions we alluded to, but there are other folks that are assigned to a district but might be on limited duty and temporarily reassigned. There's also some individuals that are on suspension, and so temporarily redesigned while their disciplinary cases are being held out. But I could ask the Chief of Patrol to further elaborate.
In the, in the office, if you'd mind.
Sorry.
Basically, what you, what you have there is you have your NCOs, your District Action Teams, your Administrative Teams, everybody that's not actually working a patrol car on a post responding to the nine-one-one calls, but they are out doing their patrols in, even though it's, it's Sector Patrol, it should be committed and uncommitted.
Yeah.
Resources. So, the officers that, that are in the black are six hundred, basically six, roughly six-hundred-and-fifty.
Yeah.
Who are responsible for responding to the nine-one-one calls and filling the cars.
Right, so, so, okay, so the six-hundred-and-forty-three officers that are represented in the black are the ones that are in the midst of the crime fight on the street, or they responding?
Those are the ones that answer, when somebody calls nine-one-one and requests an officer for a reason, those are the officers that respond. But the NCOs are in the crime fight doing their portion with the community, the District Action Teams are deployed to the most violent areas of the districts to do their portion, but they're, and they do still answer calls, if a drug call comes out, they can still answer calls, but the majority of the calls are answered by the officers in Sector Patrol.
But, um, the, the additional non-Sector Patrol officers, are, are they deployed because the numbers that are in the Sector Patrol aren't sufficient to match the need for these individual districts, or are they doing some other?
No, it doesn't have anything to do with the number in Sector Patrol. They're, they're the discretionary units that the, the District Commander has at his, basically at his or her discretion, to deploy them to wherever they want. The, the staffing for the, the Sector Patrol, those are the guys that are just, and girls that are staffed to do the, the answering to nine-one-one calls and work on the three shifts as the patrol officers. Normal, what, nor, most people consider it as patrol.
And Councilmember, just to reiterate, these are just the officers, it doesn't include supervisory ranks such as Sergeant, Lieutenant, or Command Staff. Those are in addition to what you see here.
Um, and I, I know that Councilman Scott probably will, um, allude to this in, in greater detail. Um, obviously, when you look at Northeastern and see, you know, a combination of a hundred-and-seventeen, um, officers, both Sector and Non-Sector, um, assigned to that district, and look at, you know, some of the, the other, the districts, I guess it's, the deployment is based upon the, the population within that.
Well, well, the way it works is like the Northeast, for example, believe it or not, if you look at their Non-Sector Patrol, they, their, their Non-Sector is, is relatively small compared to everybody else, because the majority of the officers that are full duty are working in patrol capacity answering calls, because the Northeast is the anomaly of all nine districts. They have more posts than everybody, because they're seventeen square miles. So, where everybody else has fourteen or fifteen, or thirteen, fourteen or fifteen posts, the Northeast has twenty posts. So they need more officers to fill that, and they, they're one of the ones that stayed with four sectors as well, because it's so big. So they need more officers right at the beginning, because the, the spreading of the posts, and as you know, the population and the calls for service has changed over a lot of years, and unfortunately, the district boundaries haven't changed, so they need more officers answering the nine-one-one calls than any of the other districts.
And is it, is it, is it typically, I guess, citywide, one officer, like, what's the deployment per post?
One officer per post, per, per car, yes, per post, on each shift.
And is that the case, um, regardless of district?
Yes.
And so, um, we, do we augment that with the other, I guess, Non-Sector Patrol? So, so for example, I mean, we just looked at statistics and saw, you know, where certain districts, obviously, the, the level of crime is higher. Um, how, how do we make adjustments, you know, as far as post, when, yeah, you might be representing an area that has greater population or greater geographic location, but, um, the, the majority of the crime fight is happening in, in another district?
Well, we don't adjust posts, because posts are, are basically what, what the officer assigned in that area to answer the nine-one-one calls, and any complaints that are, that, that come in. The discretionary units are the ones that are deployed to those most violent areas, those ones that popped up where all the crime is, where all the shootings and homicides are. Like the Monument Street Initiative, those are District Action Teams that work under the Su, I mean, I'm sorry, under the Eastern District. So they are assigned to Monument Street, that, that Monument Street corridor, in addition to what patrol officers already patrol that area, that's where they're assigned. And then there's another unit in the Northeast, for example, that's assigned in the Blair-Eddison Community, in addition to what they, those officers deployed. They, they're normal officers that are deployed on every single shift.
So, I, I mean, please excuse me if I'm just a little bit slow in this, what, what should I be getting from this, from this graph?
The distribution of our current personnel resources by, by district, and the idea here is for us to understand, just with full transparency, what resources are available as of, I believe this is as of the end of last month, so, just a, as a snapshot to show you what our current personnel strength is and the distribution. Again, one of the things we're looking at internally is a, a maximization of this, of this distribution of resources that takes into account crime, that takes into account calls for service, but also takes into account call response time, which is a big thing. So, we might be able to redeploy officers from one district to another to be able to aid in the crime fight, but it could come at the cost of getting to the office, getting to the calls for service in that district. So, it is an optimization, maximization problem, and it is a lot of factors that we have to consider, but for us, it's making sure we keep our eye on the ball, because we're trying to have, as much as we can, equitable distribution across districts. And again, the anomaly from the Northeast is the geography, and for us, it's being able to be transparent about that and showing what it makes sense, if it could make sense. I know the Councilmember alluded to, uh, redistricting, uh, effort, and we're, we're more than willing to partner with what makes it work, so that it better serves the community and the resources are, are being better distributed across the department.
So, for example, looking at the Western District, what would be the, the optimal deployment for patrol for that, for that district?
The answer is going to be a factor that it be able to handle the call volume, be able to respond with a particular goal.
Right.
Which we're setting up as a, as part of our plan. So, overall, let's, I'm, one of the goals we had in New Orleans was to reach an emergency call within seven minutes, or less, and to do that ninety-five percent of the time, right? So, those are the kinds of factors that go into that calculation, to us to be able to then deploy to that expectation. And if there are gaps to be able to reach that goal, we need to be able to identify them, and either fill them with overtime to be able to reach those goals, or just hire as many people as we can, redeploy administrative functions into patrol as we can, and to be able to continue to move forward so that we hit those goals.
So, so, but we don't know what that number is?
Not this time, I've been here ten days.
And, which means that nobody, um, determined what that number should be previously?
I can't speak.
Well, yeah, we know what the nu, we know what the number is.
Oh, okay.
Like, for example, the Western District on a, on a given day has, the midnight shift requires fourteen posts, the Baker shift requires fifteen posts, and the Charlie shift requires fifteen posts. So that's forty-four officers that are needed for a day.
Okay.
So, basically, with, with, that's, that's just not counting any leave or anything. They need forty-four officers just to fill the cars.
Mm-hmm.
For, for that day.
Cover each post. But again, looking at those posts, looking at the districts, those are all part of efforts that we're taking a close look at, to make sure that we are putting those resources in a smart way throughout the entire city.
And, and, um, Councilman Scott has a follow-up, but, but just, just another question related to that. So, in that analysis, you know, is there potential for the determination that in certain areas you need more than one officer per post, or does that?
No, it would determine that we need to change the geography of the post.
Okay, okay, got you, got you. Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just to go, uh, uh, Mr. Chief of Staff, so actually, the, the law that was passed actually requires exactly what we're talking about, because the truth is, is we haven't done, you know, the reason why this council itself has been talking about police redistricting since two thousand and five is because we haven't done it.
Right.
And the, the truth is, the council could make the Police Department done it, it probably happened twice already, but, uh, we now have legislation in the state that realizes this is an important issue, and now we're gonna have to go through that. And for my colleague, uh, when Senator McCray and myself were sitting, uh, creating this legislation within Police Commissioner Davis, we specifically made sure that we added in things that makes us look at all of the things that we always hear from our constituents. So the districts will be redrawn based on calls for service, population, violent crime, property crime, uh, uh, community boundaries, you know, land masses, all of these kind of things that have to be considered, that has been considered by cities across the country five and ten times over, so that we can actually have the optimal staffing, because since we have not done anything with that for so long, we are, uh, the department is policing on data that is outdated. And, and, Mr. Chief, that's actually gonna be my follow-up, a couple of questions. One, and I guess this would be for the, for the Colonels to answer, also, it's to our knowledge that even people, for example, like the folks at security downstairs, are technically assigned to the Patrol Bureau as well. Is that still the case?
That is changing, yeah.
It's changing.
Yeah, what we're, what we're doing now with each district is we are basically cleaning up the staffing charts with the reorganization, we are pulling the districts in, so anybody that's been detailed out for a long period of time, we're gonna transfer them, so they fall under and it's easier to track. That, that, that's part of the problem with their technology, is we can't track where all their officers are. So, we're, we're cleaning up the staffing chart, we're getting the better technology so we can account for where everybody is at any certain time.
Thank you, and my second follow-up for this sheet in particular, and, Chief, this is something that we've said, suggested to be added in, so that we can have as much information to root ourselves in that as possible, that it will be very beneficial to myself and my colleagues to put in with these, the full duty strength by, by district, the population of each district.
Okay.
And to also, you know, add in, because we get that, we consistently get the calls for service, and we, and we see that, so that we can see where we are and where we need to be, because we all know that they're out of whack.
Yeah.
And we just have to, uh, make sure that everyone has that information. And then, lastly, for this last point, this sheet does not include the, the men and women that work for Lieutenant Colonel Horazok, right?
Correct.
Correct, so, you know, what SES, or whatever we're calling it today, they're not included in this sheet at all.
Correct, so this is only the district personnel which fall under Colonel Horazok.
And these, and those are the people that are typically, uh, distributed to the areas where we consistently see violence and are, and part of it making the big investigations. Thank you. Uh, can I ask another one?
Um, I, I have some more.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, one, question related to the Education and Training Section, and, um, I don't, I don't remember this, this nomenclature before in previous, um, um, data. What, what exactly is recycled out and recycled into?
Right. So, there are times where individuals who are part of our academy classes are falling behind in the overall studies. There are choices that are made to, uh, ask them to move into the next academy class, kind of start over, in lieu of actually terminating them, saying they're incapable of being able to be educated, be able to do the job. So, what you'll see on the recycled in and recycled out are corresponding numbers for the next class, and so part of what we're identifying here are individuals that, for instance, there was one person from the twenty-nineteen oh-one class that was recycled out, that person is into the twenty-nineteen oh-two class, basically saying, you're falling behind, but we think we still have a, an opportunity to educate you, so we're gonna start you over in the next academy class. That's what a recycle is.
So, uh, for example, in the twenty-eighteen dash oh-four class, says eight were recycled out, um, and seven recycled in.
Right.
So, I guess one, where, did the?
Yeah.
Eight just disappear?
So, no, they are recycled within that particular academy's structure. So some of them go through remedial training, but stay in the academy class, for which they would graduate in July. So, some are going, undergoing remediation within their own studies, others are chosen to go into the next academy class, and so that's differential. So you're seeing in and out of the same class, but it's identified as those that are essentially in remediation.
Okay, but at the same time, seven came into that class from, from another situation?
So the recycled eight, those seven that are recycled into?
Yes.
Are the same people as the eight, so they're coming in and out. So, what we're trying to identify here are the individuals that we're trying to make sure that are identified for remediation. So, sometimes we remediate, we remediate them in the same class, as you have seen there, of those eight, seven went back into that same class.
Mm-hmm.
But one of them has been essentially recycled to a later class. And so for us, it's just keeping track of that recycle rate. And again, I'll, I'll verify if that's incorrect or not, but.
Yeah.
That's, that's correct.
Yeah.
So, ah, okay, so, some folks do get injured, and so, at the point at which they're able to be rehabilitated and go back into an academy class, they'll show up into the later classes. So, some folks are injured during physical training, physical training and, and other exercises.
So, okay, so, I can bet on, it started with fifty-nine.
Mm-hmm.
One was terminated.
Yes.
Which would take it down to fifty-eight.
Yes.
Three resigned, which would take it down to fifty-five. How do we get from fifty-five to forty-seven?
Thirty-eight.
But then we added seven?
Seven. That's a great question, and I'm gonna get you the right information on that.
Okay, I, I just.
What we are, what we're finding, what we're projecting is that forty-seven people are ready right now to finish the class, and so, the seven that are recycled back into, we're not sure if they're gonna pass yet, so they're kind of on hold. So, for us, if they are, if we're projecting that they are gonna pass, you'll see that forty-seven jump up by seven.
Okay, so this class, right now?
Yeah.
We're pretty confident about forty-seven coming through?
Yes.
But it could.
It could be higher if those recycled.
Go to fifty-four.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's right.
Got it.
Well, I probably can say the same thing.
You, you gotta come to the mic.
The recycled into number is from the previous, it's from the previous class, which means that it's counting into the fifty-nine.
Although we know who you are.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman.
You still have to.
Jim Gillis, on behalf of the Police Department. Uh, so the, the seven in that first column would be coming from the previous class, which is not listed up there, that's added into the fifty-nine. So that's part of the fifty-nine, and then you count down from there, and that takes you to forty-seven. If that makes any sense?
Um.
It's confusing, we could find a better way to present it next time, so it's more digestible. I mean, it's, takes a, it's taken me two and a half years to understand how to, to read that.
No, that, that, that's fine.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I don't necessarily agree with, but I'll, I'll leave it alone. I, I mean, I, I got it, I got it now.
Thanks.
So, um, still related to training and recruitment, so is Recruit Stat, Recruit Stat, is that up and running?
Yes.
Or is that still in development?
Um, no, it's up and running, it's part of our, uh, City Stat, so we actually do Police Stat every Friday, every other Friday, uh, and so we do Recruit Stat right afterwards. And so, um, we just had our last one last Friday, and, yeah.
So the, uh, the Police City Stat, the.
Hello.
Yeah, and please introduce yourself.
Hello, I'm Kendra Parlock, Director, Mayor's Office of Sustainable Solutions. My team has responsibility for, uh, the City Stat Smart Process, and so with, uh, the Police Department, we have monthly Police Stat meetings, they are, uh, third Fridays, uh, and then we have weekly Recruit Stat meetings.
Thank you.
So, one Friday every month, we have two meetings with the police, so that's the Police Stat followed by the Recruit Stat.
Um, and so, thank you, and so I just had one other question before I'm, um, turn the mic over to, um, Council. And so, thank you. And so, I just had one other question before I turn the mic over to Councilman Scott. On the chart that has the breakdown of applicants by location, it looks like approximately eighteen percent of the applicants come from the city.
Yeah.
While forty-three percent are out of state. Can you tell me, is that a typical breakdown as it relates to applicants, not just for Baltimore, but in similar urban environments? Or, and what is our goal as it relates to this? It, you know, not knowing, not having imported, it just seems skewed and seems out of balance.
I understand, yeah. So, the answer to your first question is yes. The answer to your second question is yes. So, in other words, it is typical of Baltimore, and it is typical of major urban cities. What we're finding is that individuals who apply to be law enforcement, typically when they look at law enforcement, are applying nationwide. And so, what we're finding is, on average, person in this area might, who's only interested in working in this area, apply to, let's say, three or four different law enforcement agencies in a, you know, hundred mile square, a hundred mile radius. Whereas, national applicants might be willing to apply to as many as eight to ten different law enforcement agencies. So, you see a large number of nationally or out-of-state applicants across multiple jurisdictions across the country. We saw it in New Orleans. And it's a product of being able to push out your national testing environment, which is an important tool that we can use to, you know, attract qualified individuals who are willing to serve the Baltimore Police Department. But overall, it also is gonna be important to watch when we look at how we target our media strategy. And so, with the digital media strategy, we can push resources more locally than it is nationally, but we could also be adaptive, to be able to find ways to push the right digital dollars, if you will, to the right, you know, areas and the right markets, that we're able to then attract quality talent. And that includes targeting locally as much as possible.
So, what's our goal as it relates to local applicants? Do we have, do we have a goal?
We have a set goal. I don't remember it off the top of my head. Hang on. So, we're looking at around a third is what we're looking at compared to the eighteen percent you see here. So, that's, we're trying to go above what we're seeing in our applicants. But that just means we need to target those applicants more forcefully. And so, we're finding ways to be able to kind of handhold applicants through the process. One of the things we saw back home in New Orleans and what we're seeing here is that people fall out of the process if they're not engaged. It's like anything else. So, for us, it's making sure we're able to have a targeted strategy that produces an outcome, where we're able to see folks shepherded through the process on a more conscientious basis that targets those locals, specifically those who do have addresses within the city limits especially, so.
Now, I don't see it here, and maybe it's something that probably should be included or put back into the presentation moving forward. The, with the, that number of applicants translates into actual, you know, individuals who are going into our academies.
Right.
And so, do you have, do you have the data that speaks to that?
Yeah, we can provide that data for you. Part of, part of what we look at is being able to, you know, start from the application process and be able to follow that as over time it matriculates. So, we're looking at, if we're looking at data to be able to see kind of where we are, we need kind of a full-year snapshot to make sure we know when a person applied, when they took the test, when they were able to come through the background and be qualified, and then go through our psychological medical evaluations, and then enter the academy and stay in the academy. So, that's a, that's a long process, and so, the best thing for us to do is to look at kind of an annualized snapshot. And we could provide that at the next meeting of where we were in two thousand and eighteen as a gauge for where we're going in two thousand and nineteen.
And in addition, is there, I know I asked, is there a goal related to the percentage of applicants that are local? Is there a goal for the Police Department as it relates to percentage of officers that are, you know, from Baltimore City?
Right. So, we're looking at local entries into the academy being at least a third of who's coming in. But the applicant pool, we're also trying to expand. So, we need to have aggressive strategies on both of these, because when it comes down to it, we need to better engage our local community who understands the community best. And so, for us, it is a priority of this administration, and we're gonna set some aggressive goals for us, you know, because what we're seeing, and what we see a lot of jurisdictions, is those who are willing to take the job may not be from here. And we wanna invite those in. Like, we don't wanna turn away resources, obviously. But what we can do to maximize our local interest, stuff like the ride-along program that I mentioned earlier, finding pipelines through engagement in our local universities and their criminal justice programs, to be able to translate those into careers within the department. These are all aggressive strategies that we're looking to make part of the Commissioner's plan. I'm kind of preempting him a little. But those are all things that we need to look at to have a multifaceted plan for us to be able to bring that local interest up, and that translates into local applicants that make it to the academy up as well.
So, just, I guess, last question or point, and then I'll turn over to Councilman Scott. So, our goal is to have a third of the officers that, or applicants that are entering to the academy to come from the city of Baltimore.
To come into city limits, right. That's, I believe, the goal.
So...
If not more. I mean, we can, we can adjust that word.
What, based upon the number of applicants that actually are selected or considered for the academy, how, what percentage of this total applicant pool would be necessary? Because it can't just, can't be a third.
Right.
I don't know if it can be forty. I don't know if it could, I don't even know if fifty percent would be sufficient to get to a third of... What number, because that's really gonna determine the amount of resources that we deploy to market, to recruit, you know, locally, if we're legitimately trying to get to a third of applicants in the academy.
Well, it goes back to that targeting effort, right? So, if we're able to target the locals and put more energy into identifying those A-list candidates that we can get through that process that are locals, we do need a larger applicant pool on the local side to be able to select from, absolutely. But it also takes that extra effort on our part through, you know, civilian support of the recruitment unit to be able to do that outreach, to make sure they stay engaged, to make sure we're not losing them to neighboring counties or neighboring jurisdictions that, you know, might be able to entice them away from the city and work for their jurisdiction. So, there's not a number I could give you, to be honest, that we could say for sure could result in this output. Because a uniform distribution, if you will, you know, it's gonna be what it is. But it does take efforts that we can identify, and, you know, some of the, some of the more basic things, you know, when it comes to the best recruiter for our department, it can be the individuals who are part of the department themselves, to be able to outreach and be able to connect with other, either family members or people they've interacted with in college or school, who are interested, that they could, they could create interest to come into the department. So, we're looking at referral programs that we can revamp. We're looking at other things that we can do to help incentivize that local population to join the department. And so, we're looking at all options on the table to be able to do that.
So, how many applicants do you have to have in order to get one recruit in the academy?
Give me a second. So, right now, five percent of applicants make it to the academy. And so, that's, that's based on an applicant pool that I know has going up, so that number may go down, because the quality of those applicants is also changing whenever it's being massively advertised across the country. So, there's a, there's a combination of factors there. So, I can't answer your question because the goalposts are moving on us.
No, I understand. I'm just saying that, so, just based upon that, you know, this breakdown of applicants means that the most that we should expect is eight Baltimore residents into the academy.
If it's a uniform distribution across this that we would select from, that math is correct. But from what our goals are, is to make sure that we have fifty people in each class. If we put more efforts towards that blue segment, to make sure that we're shepherding those people through the process with more attention, and identifying those candidates from that pool, putting more energy into that pool, which are directives that we can, we can make sure we put towards the Recruitment Division, that can yield a higher yield than, say, attention on some of the out-of-state applicants that don't look so good. And so, that's...
No, and I'm not gonna belabor the point. I just, and I think, I know we would agree, the third is aspirational, and it should be something we're going after.
Yeah.
But we all have to be realistic about the amount of resources that will have to be committed to that, that goal, or the likelihood of it happening is not great. So, Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, Mr. Chief of Staff, welcome aboard. This is something that is also near and dear to my heart, just like the councilmen's, and something that I spoke to the Commissioner about specifically, and he told me to wait until you got here to move any further with it. So, you'll be, now that you're here officially, you'll be getting an email from me about setting up a meeting with you and the school system and the folks that handle the CTE education to make sure that we're utilizing all the resources that we have at the high school level to make sure that we're pushing a pipeline throughout schools to have public safety focus. To talk about this, this sheet for one second, I just wanna know if it is possible, because I think this could aid us in the targeting, especially the digital targeting, because, you know, you can do that by zip code.
Right.
If you could provide us later a breakdown of the applicants in the city and where they're coming from? Or is it specifically from a specific portion of town, you know, that, the age?
We could provide that. Yeah, we could provide that.
That kind of information, so that we could see where they're coming from.
You wanna buy age, zip code, and?
Age and zip code would be fine.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be fine for me, unless the councilmen thinks otherwise.
Get that for you this week. No, no problem.
And then, to go, because we also, the folks that live Baltimore and some other folks, they often try to convince people that used to live in the city to come back and return to the city. And I know, I'm not gonna call anybody out, I know that there's a lot of police officers and men and women working in the department that grew up here and used to live here that don't. Have we taken a look at that to see how many of them actually exist? And also talked about, make sure that we looked at the possibility of doing things even more than what we do now to try to get them to move back into the city?
You're talking about current officers?
Current officers, yeah. Especially those that have been here along...
I haven't seen that yet, but I can take a look into that.
Yeah, it's something we should, I will, I will be interested to follow up on, especially those who have been here a long time, you know, and maybe don't have children at home anymore and those kind of things. I would be interested to see how many police officers that Baltimore has on its force that grew up, lived in the city, you know, went to school here but don't live here anymore.
Okay.
And then, I want to go to the Public Integrity Bureau stats. So, I wanna go to the open service complaints. So, it seems that we have a hundred and fifty-nine open service, open service complaints right now as opposed to thirty-seven last year, which is a big jump of three hundred and thirty percent. Do we know why that is? Are we just, you know, I know that we're, are we taking in a lot more than we did last year? It looks like that we only taking in...
No, we're taking in...
Ten percent more.
We're taking in considerably more.
Yeah.
But overall, that's something where we're looking at our resources to make sure they're being managed properly. And so, that's something I can get back with you on, because part of that is just, there's a timing of complaints, and if they're all at once, then it's, they're open versus them being closed. So, let me go look at the chronology of when those complaints were initiated. But I do wanna, I do wanna put it out there that, especially citizen-initiated complaints, in an era where we wanna make sure there's more public trust in the department, we don't necessarily wanna discourage the number of complaints. We wanna make sure that if there are actual complaints that need to be addressed, that we are encouraging that. So, I'll put that in mind. But the fact that they're open versus closed is something I'll go and look into myself. But overall, I wanna make sure that the processes are in place and that we know the chronology of when those complaints were initiated.
Yeah, that's my, my concern is not that we're getting them. We want, especially going through the consent decree process, we want people to feel like they can make their complaints. My concern is that we have a lot of them pending, and that, and that's, to me, is something that we have to get on top of. The second thing I wanted to say, in previous, if you guys could provide a, we have eighty-nine total officers suspended. We would still like to see what reasons they are, they're suspended. We don't want any personal information about them, but we would like to see why the officers are suspended.
Yeah, we can give you that sanitized, if you will, to give you category reason and show you.
And then, because this is an issue that has come up in the past, these open court failure to appear cases, does anyone know why we saw the big increase this year? Because I know this is something that has been critical to us over the past few years to making sure that officers show up to court.
I don't have that answer, but I believe we can get that information as to what that increase is distributed to.
Thank you. And lastly, for the CRB eligible allegations, we... Prior to you guys getting here, there was some contentiousness, not between necessarily BPD and the CRB, but the administration and the CRB. And I wanted to see if you, Mr. Chief of Staff, or the Commissioner has met with the folks that oversee the CRB and to make sure that that information is starting to flow again.
I believe we met with, I believe the Commissioner has met with the Executive Director a few weeks back. I'll go back and check up the calendar. It might have been right before I got here, though.
Yep.
So, but we are committed to working with all of our agencies, all of our partners, to make sure that we're, again, open, transparent, and cooperative in these processes.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'm done, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I think at the last hearing, we talked about what would be the potential supplemental request related to overtime. And I think at that time, we were thinking it might be between three to five million. Is that still the case, or less, more?
Yeah, we're, we're in our third quarter projection right now, and we're preparing a supplemental that would be five million dollars for fiscal nineteen.
Was that something, was that what we anticipated, that it would be five, or would we?
No, we, no, we anticipated it would be zero.
I thought we made adjustments with the intent that there wouldn't be.
Yeah, if you go, if you go back to the overtime slide, I think the best way to describe this, and I had a chance to go over this with Eric and team today for the first time. I mean, if you look at the overtime trends, what we've told police is if we can get to a budget of around one point seven per pay period, that that would have kept them on budget for this fiscal year. So, you can see in the beginning of the year, they did, they did pretty well. And then, it kind of has bumped up to the two million or so per pay period, you know, anywhere from, you know, week six or seven and on. So, going into fiscal twenty, you know, with the staffing levels that we're at, because we're still short on personnel, so there's a certain amount of savings that will accrue from those, from those folks, we can afford to spend about one point seven per pay period. And again, you know, the department has to be able to deploy resources and stick within that. There might be periods where we need to deploy a little bit more, and there might be periods where we need to have less. But need to stick to get to one point seven to stay on budget for fiscal twenty going forward.
So, let me, let me ask this question, not to put you on the spot, but yes, I am.
Just do it.
Because I kinda wanna, and for those who are watching, I guess, with the listening public, and probably even for my own benefit, from a budget standpoint and from a finance department standpoint, what, what does five million dollars look like? Like, give me three examples of something in the budget that is five, five million dollars, or that we might not be able to do without that five million dollars.
God, just, just thinking about a million dollars, that gets you two to three public works crews for cleaning. That can get you two fully funded rec centers for a year. I mean, I could go on and on. I mean, there's tons of things...
Keep going. I like this.
Oh, gosh. We could have another two to three crews in terms of street management or paving. Additional crews for housing inspections. I mean, you know, any, any crew that does any kind of work around the city usually costs, you know, a handful of folks, costs, you know, fully staffed around the clock, about a half million dollars to have that ongoing. So, all those things we could do more of if we didn't have that, that spending.
And, and this isn't, I raised that because I don't know if sometimes people understand why we even initiated these types of hearings as it relates to overtime. Because you hear, sometimes I think we hear the numbers and we become so numb to them that we don't realize the association between activities that we will be able to perform or won't be able to perform. And, you know, they are real budgetary concerns and issues that are related to, you know, not just the Police Department, but when any agency doesn't operate within the budget. Especially when you all made, you know, calculated decisions on the front end so that, you know, it would minimize the need to identify additional resources. And, you know, in a city that, you know, let's be frank, is challenged with the, we don't have an unlimited, you know, bank account. We can't just write a, you know, there's not just a blank check for all of these services. You know, the reality is, when we do these supplementals, something else isn't gonna get done. Or something that could have been done is not gonna, gonna, gonna happen.
Yeah, and a couple of comments. I totally agree with you. From my perspective, this has been a frustration of mine for years. I feel... I feel, you know, good from an initial standpoint about meeting the new leadership team of police that they are serious about deploying resources only where they're needed. I mean, we've gotta give them time to get there, but I feel we're gonna go in that direction.
I know, I know, this is a new team coming in.
To be very, to be very clear, I mean, it's, it's really not as complicated as we make it out to be. I think what's happened is, on this per pay period, I'm giving you a clear line, like if you're not one-point-seven, around one-point-seven per pay period, you're not going to come in for budget, on budget. And so what that means is that, and we kinda talked about this today, if you kinda back into how many hours of deployment on overtime that means, you can set targets by district or by commander for patrol or investigations and say, guys, you've got this many hours to deploy on a normal two-week period and you've gotta work within those constraints and we don't wanna over-deploy where we don't need to and use it choicefully. We can manage around that. I think frankly, from what I've seen, and this is not on the current leadership, we just haven't had a lot of constraints on how we deploy those resources over time. The department has not had that from my observation.
And Councilmember, I, I wanna reiterate to your examples that you're asking for. For us, we value it as well. Five million dollars is a hundred patrol cars. Five million dollars is a renovation or construction for a new district station. These are things we need as well. So, these are things that if we're able to better manage and better control, as we are committed to doing, we wanna be able to find those cost savings to reinvest in what we know we need for this department. So I absolutely wanna make sure that that's clear, that we understand the value of that as well. That is why we're looking at the staffing study. That is why we're looking at better controls, better authorization and better, honestly, discipline if the rules aren't followed. There's some accountabilities that has to be put into place and we're committed to doing that.
No, and I'm appreciative that we have a, a team in place that is willing to work together on this because we, we all know, and Councilman Scott and all of the members of the Public Safety Committees speak on this quite frequently, that law enforcement is just one aspect of the public safety equation. And if we, and it is one that uses the lion's share of the resources. And so if we, we never get to a point where we are able to direct additional resources to those other concerns that will help our public safety crisis, then law enforcement will be our only response. And we, we know that at the end of the day, that, that's not the response that will ultimately, you know, reduce crime to the place where we, where we all hope it to get to. Some of those other investments have to happen in order for even your investments to, to bear the fruit that we hope it would do. So, I, I'm just gonna continue to, you know, hammer on that and until we, till we right-size this and we get it, you know, get this right. Because if not, you know, we're, we're responsible for our resources. We're stewards of the people's resources and we've gotta, we've gotta do a better job of that.
I just, I'll just note that any supplemental request, it assumes we have, we've been fortunate the last few years that we've had supplemental revenue available to pay for those overages. And, you know, that, that is not normal that every year we're coming in with thirty to forty. That's because we've had a very healthy economy, properties, you know, values have been high. You know, the activity in the housing market has been high, our income tax receipts have been high. So, you know, a struggle for me with all of our agencies is, and we frankly, as an administration, have not been very disciplined, is that you can't assume that you're going to have, people always come to me, oh, we'll just ask for a supplemental. That, that means that there's that revenue available, we can't assume that. So, the expectation is that we have to go into the year and have a plan to say, how are we gonna stay on budget? And of course, there are emergencies, there's things like extra snow or there could be a public safety emergency and that's when you take reserves and put it towards those, those issues. So, I think we've gotten a little bit undisciplined collectively, it's been something that you guys have seen. But I, I do feel confident that from the discussions I've had with the team, that they get that and they understand that they need to deploy resources where they're, where they're needed, so.
No, and we'll, we'll move forward, but I mean, because the more and more I think about it, the more, more mad I get about it. Cause I mean, I, you know, I represent a, a district where, you know, when I looked at the capital budget for this year, there was pretty much was a big donut hole in the section of West Baltimore in, in every particular agency, whether that was transportation, public works, housing and especially wrecking parks. And so, you know, in the midst of a VRI, VRI zone, the rec center that I have, I don't even know why kids go there. I mean, because of the, what's being offered really is nothing but a warm box other than the, the heart, the soul, the efforts of the staff there that make it an inviting place for those kids. And that five million dollars could have been an investment into building a new rec center in Sandtown, you know, the poster child for disinvestment in the nation. And, and so, it's not supplemental, it's not extra money. It's money that's being taken away from things that have to happen in the city if we're gonna really change it. So, we gotta figure it out, we, we got to. I don't, I'm so tired, I don't even think I have another question.
Again, just, I wanna thank the opportunity to come and speak for you all. If there's any additional information that my office can provide, please let me know. We'll get it to you as soon as we can. We'll follow up on the requests that have already been made by you and others and I'll have those to you in short order.
So, thank you and I thank everyone for attending this hearing. This hearing now stands in recess, thank you all. Thank you, ma'am.